Okay, welcome everybody. Glad to see you here tonight. Um, we do certainly have a quorum, uh, so I can go ahead and call this meeting to order. And first up is approval of the minutes from July fourteenth, our last board meeting. Everybody's had a chance to review, see if there's any discussion or edits. Motion to approve the minutes thus presented. Now again, this first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Wasn't. Okay. You got that, Cheryl? Okay.
Thank you.
Alrighty. One. Okay. The one set of minutes, right?
Annual and.
Okay. Um, also at that time was the, um, the bi- so that first one was our annual meeting. And so this next set of minutes is our bi-monthly meeting held on the same day. So any edits or discussion on that set of minutes? And I take a moment. Oh. To approve the minutes as presented. Thanks. Second by Michelle. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain?
Staying.
Like harmony or. You two together? Okay, um, we don't seem to have any citizens here tonight, so we can move on. As for president's time, I just want to say thank you to all the board members who came for our board training on Saturday. Um, hopefully it was helpful and you, um, for our new board members and for, uh, senior board members, hopefully it was a good reminder of all the things that, um, we do as a board member. Um, if you've been following the news, the county has given away another four hundred and eighty thousand from the line item library services. So hanging out there is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So we'll see what happens with that in a couple of weeks. Um, thank you to all the people who give us donations. The community is just amazing. Every day we are, we are so grateful and our hearts go out to all the people who are keeping this library alive, um, one donation at a time. So a big thank you to this community. We couldn't do it without you and we do it for you and everyone's grateful. Um, there, there is a thermometer on the, uh, library's website that shows growth. And it just got updated today, so, um, it's showing the growth in donations. Yeah. Looks like this. It's bought a red line that's going horizontal. And so it's up to seventy, I don't know, cells. When it's, is it? Seven? Uh, seven hundred and seven thousand five hundred and seventy-nine. Nice. Donations. So of course we're using that to pay salaries and cover operating expenses. But that's what's come in, so, uh, keep an eye on that. And we still have a little ways to go here, um, to get through to June. But, um, but that's just amazing. What an amazing community we live in. And we will be holding, uh, and talking about more of this at the forum on the seventeenth. So come on out and we invite anyone that has questions to come out and, uh, ask your questions at our Q and A forum on September seventeenth at six o'clock. Okay. And with that, I will turn it over to our library director for the directory report.
I promise I'm not gonna read through the whole thing this time.
It's, it's really, really is. A lot goes on.
So some of the major things we've done, we really picked it up on outreach, um, activities through July and August. We of course went to, um, uh, June, or we went to Creepus in July, which fossil was the recipient for, uh, the proceeds for that. Met about two hundred and seventy-five people, was a, uh, great outreach event. Hope to be able to do it again possibly next year. Um, we also did National Night Out on Main Street, uh, which is always a extremely well-done event, uh, down by the Xibo. And there was over five hundred and twenty-five people that we got to speak with that day. We also got to do Community Fun Day over at the Warren County High School, uh, another really great and very well, uh, organized, uh, event. And we got to speak with about four hundred and fifty people. So a lot of community organizations, uh, went to that one. Um, for staff, uh, we have promoted Caitlin Leclutter as our new adult reference manager. You will see her around, uh, more often than you, some of you all met her during the, uh, uh, board retreat that we just had. Um, we also have two new members in our circulation department to cover Caitlin's hours, which is, uh, Julia and Becky, who has also just started. Uh, uh, staff are getting ready for Sammy Con, which is gonna be a couple of days right after the, uh, Q and A forum next Wednesday. Uh, we, staff's going all out. You're gonna see the next couple of days start, some of the decorations starting to pile up. So it is animation being, so we were doing anything from Lumetunes all the way to Disney to animate, did we name it? Uh, and some of us are still trying to get our costumes together. In fact, uh, for facility, um, our maintenance employee Mitchell's been really great working with our community service volunteers. You'll start to, I pretty much, they're almost finished and done at this point. So the, um, yellow stripes around the parking lot were looking, uh, pretty rough. So they were really awesome being able to get all that looking nice. Uh, for our usage and services, um, of course, again, August was not available at this time, um, our, but this, we did get all of our stats for, uh, last fiscal year. So you'll also, with coming to this, have the community report if you had, didn't see it, um, from the board retreat. Uh, some percentages aired to this. Total circulation was down one percent over FY twenty-four. I am assuming part of that is most, uh, is because of the supply issues that we were having. But we are looking to see some more ways that we can get that number up coming next fiscal year. Um, traffic count was up eleven percent over FY twenty-four, so we had over a hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and fifteen visitors walking through the door, which is fantastic. Um, and of course, the, some of the major increases has been with programs and attendees, um, with the way the kids side just was doing program after program during summer reading and also with the, uh, opening of Studio three thirty during October. We had over nine hundred and twenty-five programs, get over twenty thousand attendings throughout FY twenty-four. Um, another big number, I have to say, our volunteer hours, you know, it significantly as well, we had almost, we had over eight thousand volunteer, um, hours for FY twenty-four. We're now on to twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-nine. So we really, we wouldn't be where we are without volunteers.
That's a lot.
Uh, for programs, summer reading, of course, which are a major one, uh, we now docked it out of the park, because this is the best one we've had yet. For it ran from May thirty-first to August second, and we had seven hundred and twenty-seven children, teens, a hundred and ninety-four adults. Uh, and we changed it up a little bit, so kids and teens were doing books read and minutes. So we had thirty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-two books read with, uh, for them and with the adults for minutes read. It was four hundred and nine thousand six hundred and forty-nine minutes. So it's a long amount of time, a lot of years worth of reading. And thank you so much to Elks Club for sponsoring. Um, and we had tons of summer reading programs going on around, uh, going to the theme and then as well some other things. The kids had a really, uh, really popular bully party. And I go to, no, bully, it's like the, the kid show at right now. Uh, about eight, sixty-one people attended. Um, and then we also had a couple of outreach programs. There's a great partnership with Shenandoah River State Park that they did where kids got to make, uh, there's a type of raft called a gundalo that was really popular in this area. So they got to learn the history or how to make it and actually have them do races down the park itself. Uh, trying not to read every single one of them. Here's a lot. So you can read through all of these here, but see, we're, some of the ones we've been partnered with. Our local ATF explosive detection dog training presentation that we had with ATF, since they do have a training, uh, program around here. I had forty-five attendees got to see the puppies and how they all get to learn how to do that. It was really cool. Would love to have that some back. Uh, another great new partnership with Seniors First, which is the Shenandoah area agen- agency on aging is doing more workshops and, um, resource sharing, uh, and July was Medicare workshop. Uh, this is getting more and more popular. They're actually maxing out and, because they don't, they not just do information sharing, but they also will get to work one-on-one with people to get them set up with these resources. Uh, but they're limited on how many they can do in one workshop, so we are seeing that get picked up very, very quickly. Yeah, and studio still going strong. We had fifty-five appointments in July and August and about fifty-eight walk-ins just that. So over a hundred are averaging per month for everything in there.
Yeah. Yes.
Question, having recently crossed that threshold with Medicare. It's a program that we can continue throughout the year, maybe every other month, because it becomes relevant as people get within, uh, I think four or six months of, of that, uh.
I, yeah, I need to talk with Caitlin to see how, how often they, because they do want to change up the, um, uh, what topic they're doing each month, but that one in particular tends to be very popular. So yes.
It's confusing and it's a good thing. It's a good resource. And now everybody wants to know how to. What's, what does it mean?
Big decision.
Yeah.
It's hard to understand.
I would just like to add to the fact that, uh, yellow just scraped and, and painted on the parking lot. Couldn't have done it without the tree stirs coming, uh, last weekend, um, trimming everything back. And in the process, they trimmed all the trees around them.
Yes.
Library forest.
Yes.
And that allowed, uh, Mitchell and his helper to.
Finish it off.
Able to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, we had nine trees, the red scum and, and just another good community partnership. Just trimmed up all, a lot of the trees around and cleaned up children's garden last weekend. We'll be back to planting some trees too, so. Thank you for that. Are you good? Any other questions for Erin? Okay, um, I'd like to introduce Scott Ball from Truist and we'll move on to our finances report. And let him tell us how we're doing.
So I, uh, have for you, uh, statements from our three accounts and a performance report. Look at that, your own. But I have some comments, uh, but nice to work tonight. And our portfolio market value at the end of the block. The large endowment account was one million fifty-six thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. The Chuck Huber endowment, we have sixty-seven thousand two hundred and four dollars. And our emergency donor emergency fund is currently at four hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So that's one point five four million at the close on the thirty-first. Uh, year to date, the endowment account, the large one is up eighty point five nine percent. The Huber account is up eight point four nine percent. Uh, the emergency fund, which began in April, has CDs and a treasury fund. It's up year-to-date one point three nine, uh, with no risk. Uh, year-to-date income that we have created with dividends and interest, one two five thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars in appreciation and the portfolio has been seventy-four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, each year, at mid-year, we do a three percent distribution from our endowment fund under our provision. Uh, this year we paid that, I paid that, I checked out on July eleventh. That was thirty-two thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars.
Sixty-five cents.
And the library pays Truist Investment Services and Truist pays me. Uh, that rate is at point five percent annually. For the last four quarters, that totals five thousand thirty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Uh, just historically, so I've begun, I began working with the library in May of two thousand thirteen. So along with my, I'll have to work here if I miss. The band, uh, the unrealized capital appreciation in our portfolio today, three hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. The ice appreciation over time captured. And since inception, dividends and interest earned has been two hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Um, today, the endowment, uh, which operates under the investment policy guide that we developed years ago. Our stock portfolio was seventy-two percent of the portfolio total. Fixed income is twenty-eight percent. That includes CDs and bonds and, uh, some fixed income funds. And our cash is a little bit under two thousand dollars negative.
Last.
The investment policy statement has an upper limit of seventy percent in stocks. And so periodically, it was a couple of years ago, Pete Walker and I worked within the finance committee. We sort of drew down the equity about five percent and rotated into fixed income. So it's seventy-two percent, probably appropriate for us to, to talk about just trimming back a little bit of our equity exposure to stay within our investment policy guidelines. Uh, I use Morningstar's x-ray analysis on our portfolio. Our portfolio has an average yield of two point six four percent. We have a combination of exchange traded funds and some mutual funds. The average blended cost for us is point four five percent annually within the fund families. Morningstar's like portfolio average actually is point six four. So we're a little bit below the average. Uh, we're well diversified across, uh, value and grades, sub-large and small. Fifty percent of our equity portfolio, of our stock portfolio was large cap. Obviously, the big companies that you watch on television, they have really lifted up. So our large cap has grown nice this year. Mid-cap is thirty-one percent of our portfolio and small cap is nineteen percent of our stock portfolio. Our fixed income is primarily floating rate and short certificates of deposits, so we have very little interest rate sensitivity. Uh, given that the Fed is anticipating cut rates, we might talk about it at the finance committee level when we want to have a little bit loan maturity filing in our portfolio. But has performed quite nicely this year. Keep in mind, the equity portfolio returns averaged about nine to eleven percent annually, and we've gotten eight and a half already this year. So last year was ten. So we've had a nice combination. I'll speak to the emergency fund briefly. Between April twenty-fifth and May thirtieth, uh, we received into that account six hundred thousand dollars in donations, uh, three blocks. On July fourteenth, we sent out sixty thousand to support the operation. On August fifteenth, we sent out a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We burned about five thousand in various income. That's super safe, no principal risk. That's what the donors were requesting. And so we can do that without any cost to the library. So the fee the library pays me, I do as a courtesy of the Chuck Huber account and the, uh, emergency account, without cost. Uh, weighted average returns, quite nice. An aggregate a hundred and thirty-eight percent since May of two thousand thirteen. Uh, year to date, we're up eight point five nine in the endowment, trailing one year is ten point four, trailing three years, ten point nine, trailing five years, eight point seven, and since inception's seventy point five nine. Keep in mind, the rule is seventy-two, seventy-two divided by your rate of return is how long it takes to double your money. And so if we average seven point two, we double the dollar every ten years. So we've done that with nice efficiency and nice diversification. Uh, so I'm pleased with the portfolio. Happy to answer any questions. About the only option that we needed, that we will need, is to think about rebalancing a bit, take some equity off. And, uh, just bring our equity exposure maybe to sixty-five percent gives us room to grow into the end.
Is that something we need to let go to the finance committee?
Can.
I know we're meeting this week.
You'd be an appropriate venue.
Okay.
Come pass on the decision of the finance committee to Scott.
Okay. So, yeah.
Sound all right to you, Scott?
It does.
Okay.
What, when is your meeting?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
By, pretty much thirty, Wednesday.
Need to meet to take action based on the finance committee.
I don't think so. Do we need to take, Melody, do we need to? I think the finance committee can do it.
I would say no, because you're, you're taking your fund and getting it back into alignment with the policy.
Policy, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like a major action.
No, and it's not taking any calls out. We're not, we're not anything to, yes.
Okay.
We're not spending.
It's within the policy guidelines, I'm sure. Yeah.
Okay. Scott, I think you have one question. Uh, in, in line with that, how recently was the portfolio? That's the before.
So it's creeped up to seventy-two, riffle, my, how long did that take? It took about two years. So in Pete Walker's last year, uh, we rebalanced, reallocated those to some CDs because of that one's for five percent. Uh, and so we had about four percent appreciation of a three this year, so that's about seven or eight percent of equity appreciation.
Right.
And so it's appropriate.
If, if we rebalance down to about sixty-five percent, we should expect things go well. That two years from now, we'll have to do that.
Right.
Okay. Fair routine.
And, and ultimately equities, so the risk and reward, the volatility of equities of stocks is much higher. So we want to build upon a foundation of safety, the equity portfolio, that we're thinking about this endowment in perpetuity.
Yeah.
And so the circumstances of the library may change the time horizon for that. And we can respond quickly to that time horizon should we need to. But ultimately, we want that equity, we want to be near the maximum equity because the long-term performance of equities supports the operation in perpetuity. And so there's a balance there and we'll need to read and react to the circumstances of the library and be able to respond to it.
Any questions for Scott?
Oh, yes. So I understand that Truist has fees. Do some of the things that you invest in for us have fees themselves as well?
They do. So we have exchange traded funds. They're a bit lower fees and we have some active mutual funds that are a bit higher. And so our average blended fee on our endowment is point four or five percent annual, so forty-five basis points. A little bit below a half percent.
Okay, alright.
And that is separate from the one and a half percent that the library pays.
Yeah, so that's, that's like two percent in total that are going to fees for some management either through you.
You're, I have the Truist down point four five to carries of the funds.
That's not bad.
Not, okay, alright. And just as a, as a comparison, the uh, Morningstar, which is a third-party fund evaluator, looks at, when I put our portfolio in their x-ray, their analysis, the average cost of funds in our with our classification would be point six four. So we've purposely had some really low-cost core. And then we use active management to try to create some alpha ground before.
Do, do we get anything that looks like that report that breaks that, that down or is always interesting to you talking to us?
That's me subscribing to Morningstar, but I don't have the ability to provide it publicly.
Okay. So in my contract, so.
Alright.
Alright.
You, you would be able to find that if you did some sleuthing.
That's right, sleuth.
I gotta figure out what I wanna dig us to and it, I'm not this out of for it.
Yeah, alright, stop, stop. We're doing well is the bottom line. One more quick question. Yeah, Scott, do you have any recommendations for us with regard to the Hoover Fund and safety?
So the Hoover Fund has the Vanguard Balanced Fund, which is very consistent with our investment policy statement. So that's a low-cost, um, sort of buy and hold scenario. Uh, the donor emergency fund, one of our, I believe one of the pledges we making to the donor is that we won't take stock market or principal risk. Um, and so that means that we're either gonna buy treasuries, certificates of deposit, or US agency. Um, so we've scanned, but the CD market has been a little bit better than the treasury market. I have a treasury money market fund that I use for liquidity, so we can park in that. It pays monthly. I think last month it paid about three point nine five annualized. And so when Erin or Eileen says, we need to sweep over, I can take that liquidity, allowing the CD ladders of a one, two, and three-month CD maturity. When that comes in, we get that income at maturity. And the fund allows us the flexibility of working with our cash flow needs up. So we're principal safety first, income second, on, on the emergency.
So Scott, being that, of course, we don't get there, but next year we have to get into the fund. Is that, do we think differently at that point? Or I guess we just set up a meeting with you before we start in that decision to say, hey, we wanna think different about our investment.
So I think that we'd have to amend our investment policy statement because our mission would be different, which is needing to support the operation immediately. If we need immediate support, we want to reduce our equity exposure. That's what we worry about is having an unseen event.
Right.
So the market prices on the expectation of what it knows. But the big drawdowns in the market have always been something that we didn't expect, whether it's COVID nineteen or the, uh,
A recession.
Two thousand, the
Yeah.
Oh eight crisis. With nine eleven. So those shocks to the system take you down very quickly. If we build our cash flow needs around that principle and that principle drops quickly, we may not have time to allow to recover.
Okay.
So, Cheryl, to your point, the good point is today, our endowment is built for longevity.
Right.
But if our circumstances change, we may need that longevity to provide support immediately. And that would reduce the risk profile that we want taken.
We'll probably bring you in. Maybe you'll have to, but it helps to have the experts in the room. Any other questions? Well, Scott, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you for being available when we have questions.
Thanks for the questions. If you have other questions, you can reach me directly. I'd be, love to talk about the library and investments a good.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you. Okay. And then, um, for the rest of our finance report, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Yeah, so, uh, I'll give the finance, the committee is meeting on a monthly basis, um, just to go over girls that are needed. Make sure that withdrawals are, that they make sense for spending. So again, um, I think, uh, we, uh, give permission every month to what the withdrawal, withdrawals is, you know. So that's basically, we'll meet again on Wednesday, second Wednesday of every month, the finance committee is. So anybody's welcome. If you have any questions, let me help it. Um, outside of that, our operating, operating account right now, eighty-eight thousand. Uh, the reserve account is a hundred and two thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars. The melon account is ninety-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven. And the melon CD is a hundred and forty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-nine. So this is in addition to the Truist accounts. Done.
And the community foundation.
Okay.
Um, we, yeah, we need to have Asian cover, we forget what, seven thousand three hundred and fifty-seven. And then seven thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars are, uh, community foundation accounts. Community.
Cheryl, can you repeat the numbers for the melon grant?
Yeah, the melon account is ninety-five seven eighty-seven. And then the melon CD is one forty-three four two nine.
Can you explain the difference there between those fees?
We ha- we opened up a money market account to be able to, I mean, to make ourselves back for melon expenses as we went along.
Yeah.
And then we parked a chunk in CD at a better rate.
So they, when you say melon, yeah, that's, that's a melon.
Operator.
So the melon grant.
Yeah, then you've got the CDs, which is separate. You put the two together and that's how much melon money we still have.
Yeah, exactly.
That is true. So they, that the melon.
People understood.
Yes. That is our.
Account wasn't like all the money from melon.
That's that.
Yeah, no, between the two of these, you're right, between the two of that's how much money we have. Or did.
Remaining.
Thanks.
Is there something where we spend the money first and then they reverse us, is that?
We reimburse ourselves.
You reimburse, okay.
So. Half million dollars. And now we have. And now we have to account for it. And so we parked it in locations that would keep it isolated from operating, but would also help it keep earned because the more earnings that one it can do with the amount of money.
Right. And we checked with them to make sure that we could do that.
And it would earn interest.
There's what they gave us.
Then we bask.
Yeah, but even interest earned will, has to be used for you can't use the interest for anything else.
Otherwise, they either just kept the money and distributed as we needed it, they made the interest.
Right.
Yeah, and what I'm trying to do is get to a point where I only reimburse the library now quarterly.
Huh.
Because it's just before, because we do have an employee that's paid by the grant, and then there are expenses that are incurred for the maker space and the memory lab and all. But if you look so far, we haven't had much of an issue with that, except when databases came due, they were expensive, so I have a such.
So added in salaries, you'll see that melon is in the salary.
That is correct.
Melon is in the salary.
So that's why it's a little longer.
Whatever's left of melon, is that enough to cover that employee for the rest?
For five years.
Five years.
Five.
Yeah.
Five-year grant.
Okay, so where we are in track, we don't, we're not
We're in great shape, yeah, in great shape.
Okay, I don't know how to tell that with the projected plan.
It's a whole different budget that we've never bothered to bring in front of this group.
Okay, cuz at this point, I'm just tishing your word for it.
You, you may come and look at it anytime.
Okay. We did present it on, at the annual meeting.
The way?
I think so, cuz I was like, how much do we have left, and it's another whole accounting process, the melon, just for the melon.
There's a whole recording feature that we have to do at the end of each melon, this, there, the fiscal year for the grant, which is April, like, uh, April first to March.
Okay.
See, what I'll do, I'll make copies of the original grant application that was approved and bring it to the finance committee meeting, or if you're not in.
Sit one sec.
I'm staying.
Come by and get it.
I know, I, I wanna go, but I have other conflicts on Wednesdays, so.
We can, Aaron, you have it less chronically, like I said, it took a week.
Okay, all right.
That might help a lot.
And really, if you just wanna see anything, any reports, let me know, so I know, you know, we can, we can fill anything.
Fill anything you want.
Yeah.
I still need to pay you a visit to get statistics.
Okay.
I know, I know, one thing that's, you know, right, you know, there's a concern about where our, where we're, how fast we're gonna deplete our, um, emergency fund. So that's something we're gonna work on as well, is, you know, making sure that we understand, and we need to know exactly when that emergency fund can go. So that's something we work on every month.
Have we done anything to cut costs?
Oh, yeah, it's much assuming it's possible. So, you know, I think is, you know, every turnover, attrition's gonna be reviewed at every step. Anytime somebody attrits, you know, the earth value, I mean, you have to help the employees or doing the cleaning and all that stuff.
That's a bad, that seemed, that seemed a lot of money, right?
About ten grand savings, and we have medical came in under what they had said originally, and that's about ten grand savings. And then we have cut
community.
I think it's ten or twelve hours out of staff times.
Well, there's
Sir. Eileen did it from the annual meeting, we've talked about it at the, at the, at the July meeting. But Eileen spent hours and hours going over the budget with a fine-toothed comb and cut everywhere that she could cut. So the new budget that we had to approve, which we all voted on in July, reflected all of the, all of the cuts that she already made.
Well, that's something I was looking at here on salaries, and it says we budget seven, seventy K, yet July and August were going over two to three thousand.
And that is the melon grant.
They have it back.
Yeah, so some of that's covered by the melon.
That will be reimbursed. That's more than ten thousand a year if we continue that route. Then there's that savings.
Okay. You know, we talked about that in finance last month, and you really have to take a quarter-by-quarter look at it, not month-by-month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the things that don't get entered, adjusted until the end of the
If it's easier for everyone, I can do the melon grant every month.
So we don't
Didn't matter to me.
We don't include the melon grant when we budget, is that why?
It's not in the operating budget, no, because that's not funding. But I pay for it with operating funds and then reimburse the operating account.
Okay, that's, it, it's hard to see that here, cuz here it looks like we, we keep going over what we budget here.
So you're saying the seventy-one, nine, seven, eight versus the seventy?
Yeah.
How does this show?
It'll, it'll shake out when you back out the number quarterly with the reimbursement.
Yeah, but when, when I look here, it looks like we're not doing a great job sticking to our budget. That, that's what I'm getting at here.
Now you know.
Well, I think if we take it out, if we take it out of the line, or do we just add it to the account?
What I could do with it is expand, I have a separate, um, sub-account.
Yeah.
A melon grant salary.
Perfect.
And I could just show that on the report that myself.
Community, 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 community.
Take the sub-account and subtract it, and then not show it at all. So little
community.
Not accurate.
Neither is this.
Sub-account would be better, it'd be like highlighting, like when we highlight it.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember three of both, so I could show.
Why don't we take a look at that Wednesday?
We can do, yeah.
Figure out what would be
How it should show up on the report.
I can, I'll do that. Wednesday, we've got a couple acts, and I am
I will get confused about this.
Every meeting, right?
Every meeting.
I ask that every meeting.
Just spend about an hour with me, let me know when you're coming, I'll bring my baseball bat. Feed it in here.
If that doesn't
Jean has a question?
Yeah, I have a question that the, on the budget versus the actual, same thing, similar.
Okay.
It says from July to, July twenty, twenty-five to June twenty-six, a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-five, is that?
Think of that as year-to-date. In other words.
For the fiscal year?
Yeah, it's year, when I look at that, I think the same thing as year-to-date, right, YTD.
And the salaries.
And that
Yeah.
I think as easily as possible. This report takes into account the actuals for July and August, because that's all I had when I went to run this report last week, was July and August of twenty-twenty-five.
Okay.
I show the full year's budget so that you can see how we're performing against full budget. We should, in the upper right-hand corner, it tells you we should be at sixteen-point-seven percent. Two months of expenses should equal sixteen-point-seven percent, and we're at seventeen-two, and I guarantee you that's the melon money. So we show the whole budget and the whole, um, expenditure up to date so that you can see how we're performing against budget. Does that help?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay.
And it all know.
It's the heinous abusing, because it looks like that it would be salaries for the entire year, pretty much.
Yes, it wasn't year-to-date, and then, yeah, so we need your budget, then we changed that editing to be year-to-date.
Yeah.
I know, it begins in July and ends in June.
Yeah.
So the fifth year is only a hundred and forty-four thousand.
We haven't reached
Year-to-date.
Yeah. Oh, okay. So that's which we spent
Is that year-to-date? July and August. The first two col, the first two columns are July and the budget for July.
You all.
Next one is August and the budget for August. And then you get to the year-to-date, July to June.
Twenty-four.
Okay.
And then
Not the budget.
The full year of our entire budget.
For year, we have basically our
Yeah.
The fiscal year goes, which is your budget, and you start, yeah, we can change that, July to August.
Yeah, it seemed like it would make sense that July twenty-five to August twenty.
Okay, so it's
Yeah, year-to-date.
Yeah.
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 Portable from true.
Cause the entire yearly budget is eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand.
Yes. Yeah, I spent seventeen-point.
Okay, cuz I'm looking at it like you did, that because the melon, because the melon, your mouth that runs from this state to this.
And then it's, it's in blue, because they buy a change piece of it, it's paid, yeah, through the state's native money.
So, okay.
I have everything in blue, and then
So we're gonna change it to say year-to-date.
The grants for Chuck on the eight as well.
I can see, cuz I was thinking that's how much they spent this year.
We're over here talking about your suggestion and Cheryl, it's a good one.
Yeah. I thought that was the budget line from July of twenty-five through
Twenty-six.
But it's the total of the numbers that came from it.
Yeah.
Use it.
Yeah.
We clear that up.
Exactly.
We can fix that with just a change in the head.
It's the total of the years in front of it, but at our next meeting, we're only gonna have two months displayed again, but it would also include the past, all, all four months.
Year-to-date and the sixteen-point-seven.
It is, it's year
To-date.
Right.
For the, yeah, fiscal year.
To-date.
After.
Okay.
And the sixteen-point-seven should read what, thirty-two?
Half?
About that, yeah.
Okay.
Is it what make
The
I think it's helpful that you put this sixteen-point-seven percent at the top right-hand corner, cuz the, the overview, the big picture, at the bottom of the second page, year-to-date, we're at seventeen-point-one percent, so we're
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so that we get an eyeball for where we are.
We'll say that just a number up there floating on its own has no context.
Needs a label for
Yeah.
Needs really
This makes, makes sense to the person that's dealing with it on a daily way.
First, like, this, guys, it's important here.
I mean, the rest is, it's why
Sell, right?
We're fixing dinner and after, for the rest of the
True, yeah.
We could put it in different format so that it
We do a comment on the targeted
Yeah, but
Percentage.
Suggestion is that this needs a label.
Percentage to date.
Yeah.
Target percentage to date.
Yeah, I like
There you go.
Yeah.
No, that's good.
Let's keep it close to PDS.
Anything else on the findings?
Yeah, you spelled donor emergency fund transfer incorrectly.
Not allowed to pick on siblings. It's probably the auto-correct in the computer, if it's like
On talent, yeah.
That's just a happy to be glad.
All right, any other questions for Michelle?
Community.
Good? All right, thank you. And, and she had nervous brain. Any more work for Eileen to be?
No.
It'll be tough, after we're done. Um, okay, so on Wednesday is the finance committee. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, over to, um, Joan for strategic planning.
This strategic planning committee met on August eleventh, and we've started the, we, uh, a review of the strategic plan is and, um, we did look at the mission, vision, and value sections. Um, the committee made no recommendations for any changes in those sections. Um, in the governance section, there was a minor change, um, that it in that setting up the, uh, uh,
community.
Orientation. Uh, developing the annual continuing education program, rather. Um, that responsibility will now be transferred over to the co, committee trustees, committee on trustees.
Community. Community.
It's a change, but it's not really that much of a change, because right now, that process was done by our board president and the library director. Well, the board president, library director is also on the trustees committee. So they will still continue to be part of that process, but there'll be other eyes on the process and other brains thinking of ideas to make the process more helpful. So
Good plan.
It's not a huge change, but it is a change.
Community.
Community.
We looked at financial resources, um, and, um,
Community.
That section.
Community.
I'm not a good speaker. I stumble a lot.
You're fine.
So have mercy on my soul. Okay. Objective B should include, on, on the financial resources section, section B should include acknowledgement of the extent of funding through the state and via grants. That was to suggest to, to demonstrate, yeah, clarify.
Community.
Facility section of the strategic plan, no changes. Of correlation section, strategic plan, no changes.
We'll continue this process, um, throughout the year. Now, we're gonna meet again on, um, October thirteenth at five-thirty. Um, all, all of you are welcome, bring your good ideas, or just email them to me, and I will present them. Celeste was kind enough to do that, um, and we were able to look at that, her thoughts in the August meeting. So we take them very seriously, and we do talk about them and work with them. So that's essentially what happened in the August meeting. Does anybody have any questions or comments or thoughts?
Community. Community. Community.
Okay. Thank you, John. Um, development committee report, over to Scott.
Development committee met on August twentieth with Whitlow's departures, now on the ASK meeting, depending on the chair for that committee, so again, getting up to speed a little bit more. Um, a couple of things to report, SEMICON is coming up fast. It's not a development activity per se, but it's a great opportunity, because it's such a huge community-involved activity. It's really good for us from a relationship-building standpoint. So if you can, uh, try to drop by SEMICON, I say it for no other reason than to see what Aaron's looking like that.
And we'll be wearing a wig, he's coming.
A wig is involved, oh.
Now, the annual appeal is coming up in early November. That's gonna be here sooner than we, you know, we think. You know, that'll be here just like that, October goes quickly. Uh, so, uh, one thought with the annual appeal is we'd like to get each of the trustees involved in that. So if there are potential donors that you know of that are recipients of an annual appeal letter, think about delivering that letter in person, rather than mailing. That will save us on postage. More importantly, those, those one-on-one conversations, uh, will likely lead to a better result than simply mailing them a request. So we'll be contacting each of you as we get ready for the annual appeal to go out and see if there are people that you know that you'd like to hand deliver to and have those personal discussions.
Or, or perhaps write a note, if you
Yeah. Um, the business supporter, uh, program launched, um, there's been some conversations with Valley Health, and Aaron, you can, I'll ask you to elaborate on now, those conversations and what their engagement has been up to now.
Um, we've been in communication with them, we are waiting to hear back from them, we've done, um, a couple of asks. Ones is like, for in the past, they've helped us with the collection for, uh, adult nonfiction, for, um, uh, helping keep our medical books, um, anything from psychology to, you know, updated women's health, or, um, uh, Alzheimer's, anything you can think of, they help They help keep that collection up to date. So, uh, continuing on that and then as well as, um, uh, Amy actually had a great idea of starting, um, a medical side of. We would love to be able to do a, uh, library of things. So this would be a collection started where you can like, uh, um.
Blood pressure.
Blood pressure machines, thank you, be able to check out things like that, that you may not, some people may not be able to readily access. So. That, that's part of it. So, um, fingers crossed, hopefully, maybe they'll, they'll go for it. We're just waiting to hear back.
Um, other, uh, other early, um, business supporter candidates are Play Favorites and Main Street Geeks. That have been involved with a, a lot of our different programs and.
Yippee.
The intention there is to get them signed up as official supporters. And as we get those business sponsors, uh, we'll add that to our website so that there's a, a recognition there for them. And, and once that begins to grow, it's easier to attract them as a sponsor. Uh, so look for more updates on that. Each meeting, we should be able to announce new, uh, small businesses, local businesses, and then. Even larger institutions like Valley Health, uh, signing on to that first round. We got an update from Fossil on their stellar fundraising and there's a book sale coming up. Sydney, it's the twenty sixth, right?
I'll, I'll have more on that, but yes, we.
I don't want to skewer your thunder, but I'll give you a little quick entry there. Um, and, uh. As Melody informed us at our meeting, the, the contract with the fundraising team is winding down and it concludes a week from now. Uh, but we were, after working with them for several months, we have, we benefit, uh, from the con, some of the contacts they've made. Some of the templates that they've developed, uh, for us for future fundraising activities, uh, but it did not lead to any major donors. So that was.
Yet.
Yet. So it's a little bit of a disappointment for me. I didn't really know what to expect from, I was, I'm, I'm always hoping that you're going to cast that. That, make that cast and you're immediately going to catch the big one.
And.
That helps you happen.
Well, just so you know that we got. Sort of anonymous donation last week for fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
And we did that. We did that.
That's right.
We're learning to fish.
We're learning to fish. So we did get, um, training and resources and contact, um, information for, on both. Uh, national media as well as some big donor. And so that's going to take time. They're still out there. But we just can't afford to, to.
Continue on.
Continue on with them. But we've gotten the training, so now we're on our own and we will, we know what to do. Keep, keep going and keep, uh, raising, raising the funds that we need to raise.
Um, our next meeting is October fifteenth.
All are revised. You need to eat.
October will be, um, finalizing the annual appeal so that it can get mailed in early November.
You need to eat. You need to eat. You need to eat.
Any other questions for development?
You need to eat.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, moving on to Celeste and the committee on trustees.
Okay, well, um, you should have a survey somewhere, I think, right? Everybody has, um, so their, your board self-evaluation survey should be somewhere in front of you. Please make sure you get that back to me today. Because my experience shows that if you leave here and don't get it to me, then it'll never get to me, ever. So, um, that's one thing that we, we will be doing and looking at at our October meeting. Um. We discussed at our last meeting that we do have several, uh, openings coming up. Madeline and I are in our final year. Uh, and of course Whitlow resigned, so that actually leaves a pretty big hole in any type of marketing communications. Um, because that's where the three of us suffer at our expertise. So, um, we'll be looking for a fundraiser, marketing communications. Uh, possibly another lawyer, because we would like to be able to take some of the burden off of Kim being our, our only legal voice on the team here. Um, so those are some of the things that we're considering and we do, are cognizant of the fact that we only have one South River District representative right now. So. Cheryl, do you have any suggestions of people who might be a, a good fit? Please pass them on. We'll be opening up the, um, applications as usual. Uh, in February and they'll be due in March and we will, uh, go from there soldier force. But we've got a good team and we're really thankful to all of you for all of your hard work and participation. And I didn't put the date of the next meeting. It's initially the last Tuesday of the month, as long as that doesn't conform to the board of supervisors meeting. If it did, then. We moved it back a week, but I think it's the last.
Take some of that over.
You need to eat. You need to eat.
Any questions for Celeste?
You need to eat. You need to eat. You need to eat.
So your surveys are anonymous unless you want, just want to put your name on them. But if you would stop. Drop any of your, uh, if the work of forms here with her, that would be awesome.
No, she.
Okay, and then. That leads us over to.
Got his own.
Kim Bell.
Always.
Final policy by laws.
The policy by laws committee met on August twenty fifth. We're still working on the release forms for Studio Three Thirty, but. Erin has sent me revised versions, I believe. So, um, we're going to be meeting before the next meeting to hopefully finally finalize those documents. There's been a lot of back and forth on the documents. Uh, we did also just discuss, uh, revisions to the meeting room policy. Which you should have a copy of the proposed revisions. I think these were made, um. In combination with recommendations from staff. There have been some issues, um, with usage of the meeting rooms. So, uh. Conference rooms are going to be loaded to three hour reservations and student study rooms, you can have two, two hour sessions per day. But no more than three times per week. So you can't use a study room more than twelve hours a week. Um, and then there's walk-in reservations on a first come, first served basis. So I do move, um, out of the committee that we, uh, amend the meeting room policy as set forth in the policy provided in the board's packet.
Are the two, two hour sessions, can they be back to back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, before, um, the study rooms were just pushed on for sure, but with the impact for people on the list, it's right now, it's just here that.
It's a couple as well.
Like power lines, I need.
Yeah. Um, the reason why we have these limitations here is just to make sure that no one person is, uh, monopolizing their one's long periods of time, that everybody gets the chance to use it.
Community.
Any other discussion?
We have some suspects on the, uh, use of each of the different rooms.
We, yes, we're not.
I don't want me, but I can.
Rates.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, because one question is if, if there's a problem with study rooms, do we need more study rooms?
We could always use more study rooms.
Where will they?
Need a bigger building.
You know, if you say, yeah, solving, that's a totally different question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it would be good to know if that's a constraint that we're running into.
Yes, we are bursting out just scenes.
We feel it was a bigger building.
Exactly, yes. So the problem is more the length of time of the reservation. Um, people are having a tendency to set up office here. It's what they're doing.
COVID changed the way people do business.
Yes, so that you might have first of all, they try to use the room for six hours at the end of the day and then no one else getting into the room. So that's more the challenge we're facing.
It is a possibility to partner with the town or with the county and find available study room space and, and their facilities.
We usually, if there, if we're all filled up, we do try and give recommendations to people, like for instance, going to the community center as well as you, that's usually our go-to, that since they do have rooms available.
Yeah, they are pricey.
Yeah.
That's the only downside for.
Also, they'll send you a check out.
Oh, yeah, ours are free. Usually we put out an extra table.
Isn't it for your business?
So it's not pretty, but it's small. Yeah, but we put out an extra table last, six months ago or a year ago. And there are days, every table's booked, the study rooms are booked, conference rooms are, I mean, it's just.
The, there are days.
He starts standing up and has this community rooms.
High free.
Um, similar, it's not as big as with Sheriff's Department, uh, community room is, but they do have one. And I don't, I mean, they utilize it for training and so forth, but it is, uh, there for the public to use and. I think you just would have to call and say, is it available? They don't currently charge for it. Now, if somebody's trying to set up office, that might be, but if it's, you know. A student or something and it's got a computer test and they need a quiet space, that might be a possibility.
It's a good recommendation for the, because we do have challenges with people. Not necessarily proctoring, but they need to take the test and it can't have windows, it can't have this.
They do have windows.
Yeah, it's been really challenging. I, I don't, they almost need to be like in a closet and it's like, unfortunately, we can't do that for safety reasons, so, you know, windows.
I won't be code.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
That, which is with curve.
Okay, I, I have a motion on the table. If we're done with discussion, can I get a second?
Second.
You'll, you will, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, we have an amendment to our policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us over to Fossil. Sydney, what do you got for us?
All right, um, so Fossil did just complete our annual report. If you, if you haven't got to one, let me know. I have some in the bookstore. You definitely want one. Because inside it is a coupon into our book sale, which is at the end of this month, the twenty sixth through September thirtieth. The thirtieth is the final name your price day. So those are the day we want everybody to come in and clean us out. Um, this year we will be doing the book sale a little differently, um, but we have a hefty goal of reaching ten thousand. Whereas last year we had, our goal was eight thousand and we hit it at eight thousand dollars and ten cents. So. Two goals this year, uh, but we're hoping to reach ten thousand. Um, if you've never been, we fill this room. We are also going to have leftover records from the pop-up pop event that we did. Not everybody was able to get into that event, but wanted to see the records. So we're going to promote the fact that we have those. We're going to have an entire media corridor back there for those. Um, as far as the report goes, we are getting back a lot of them, so we think that is going well. We will not have real numbers on that till the next meeting, because we are still getting them every day. I processed another twelve of them back there before this meeting. Um. Let's see, um.
You need to eat.
That's kind of everything. Oh, it's not everything. We did have unfortunately one member that resigned from the board. But we have been able to re, not replace them, but fill the position now with another member. Um, their name is Vesper. They work in the bookstore, but they also, because they're an author, have social media and marketing experience. So I am very excited to have them on. And so they can help us with our social media, which is going well, and we are about to be able to monetize that and start investing that back into ads like for the book sale. So we are doing our best to. Monetize and seek every opportunity that we can. And we just had our annual meeting. Thank you to those of you who came out. We had Chipotle and cake, a dinosaur cake. It was a lot of fun. It was exciting to see. It was also volunteer. Thank you to see our volunteers and to meet people that came out. We really loved it. Uh, we think we're going to go with that. We're met again next year. So.
I know, I know the library submitted some asks to.
Oh, Fossil?
We got checks.
We got checks.
We got checks.
And you have more coming.
Well, I'll take more.
I've been told there's two checks I have to write and sign. Um, so Dean's getting those to me. But yes, we did fund hoopla. Um, we did, um, do some individual asks. We are excited. We are having a big program in here. Um, with a historical site in Winchester. There is an inn called the Blue Ball Inn. It is historic. It goes back to Civil War times and colonialism and all of that. And they are doing a really awesome history thing there. They have an archaeological dig. But they also have paranormal investigations, which are helping fund the restoration of the building. So we are having the paranormal team and the historian and archaeologists to come in here and to talk. And we have funded ghost hunting kits that we are going to launch to let the library borrow. And launch in conjunction with it in hopes that people will take them there and investigate there and have a great time. So we're kind of merging that cryptid fun spooky thing that's popular like our Bigfoot. But with the historical aspect that people in this area ever love. So.
Company is saying the Heritage Society is having a ghost tour.
It's true.
Too.
Yeah.
Uh, it's been big for a long.
Yeah.
But, but suddenly it's here.
It took a while.
Yeah.
And we have a whole section of just Virginia ghosts.
Yeah.
Like I've, I've seen like.
Yeah.
It's like we have a section there. It's this many books.
One Virginia ghost.
Virginia's an old state.
Yeah, I didn't realize how.
Yeah.
Good that was.
Yeah.
We, we like to know we got a call.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate all of it. And it's good to hear, good to hear things are going well and, and that you're doing your, your normal. Excellent, uh, partnership with us. So, thank you. Cheryl, anything you want to share with us? What's county business? Um, good stuff? Any good stuff going on?
Videos, so that I will behave myself tonight. Honestly, yeah, I think, um. What I said at the last meeting spoke volumes of where I am with what the board is doing. Uh, I don't agree with, um, using short ti, uh, one-time money to do long-term expenditures, um. Whether it was library money or not library money. So it was kind of a two-fold, um, pain for me is that. They're dispersing out that money and, um, and they think using one-time money for long-term is, uh, is the worst thing to do. Um, what was left, you mentioned a number. Honestly, I haven't been brought into the loop of that. I see it when it hits the agenda. So I don't know what is going to be done with that funding. Um. And the only thing I can say is I hope people vote smartly this year and that we can turn this mess around.
And, and we will be reaching out to let all the, invite all the supervisors to come to the forum. So I'll be sending an email this week. Um, so you can look for that.
Also the new county administrator.
The new county administrator, yeah.
Is there any, uh, any plan for Dr. Daly for a retirement celebration or send-off?
Hmm, not that I have been made aware of, but I think it, out of respect for the amount of time that, um, he's given us, something should be done.
Yeah, he's done a lot for the county in multiple roles over.
No, I agree.
Years, yeah.
You know, he and I don't always agree, but I respect that man and appreciate that. Coming out of retirement and taking on this mess. Um, he came out of retirement, well, he was still retired when he took on the EDA, working with that. And then he really got into the hornets nest when he came out of retirement to take on the county administrator's job. And I. I do appreciate everything that he's done and I, I agree, we should do something. And I don't know if, what the plans are, but I will have that conversation with Ms. Meadows, because I, I think it's just. He's going to stay on for a little while. I'm not sure how long that little while is going to be, but so somewhere in there.
Yeah, it would be deserved.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Cheryl. And we appreciate you coming, even though we're not in a, in an official MOA at the moment. So we always appreciate your input.
You know, it.
We want you to know what's going on here. So.
Isn't it in the bylaws or something that the horsemen's base, so we're, we're sticking to our bylaws.
Yes.
We're sticking to them, doing, doing the right thing here.
Okay, I don't think we have any old business. Does anybody have any new business they want to discuss?
Just want to make sure the board's aware that the audit begins Wednesday. Just want to make sure the board's aware that the audit begins Wednesday. So they'll be crawling all over me for three days.
Well, that's when they're physically here, right? Or is that when you
You sit in my office.
Yeah. And that takes about three days.
Do we need to approve any monies to be transferred to operations or anything like that? So if we could
I think we're okay right now.
Did they send you an audit letter already to say what? You have to have prepared, ready for them.
Oh, gosh, she's been working on that.
Say you've already been working.
Now they have You go to, that's got the small list and you upload.
Yeah, she's been working on it.
Forget, I already sent you a copy of QuickBooks, it's in QuickBooks.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of Sorry, under.
And then he was underway.
By the time they came in the door.
Yeah. And it'll all be wrapped up in November because we have legal filing. About 90 has to be in in November. And then it's for our November board meeting, our auditor will be here to talk about the
Comes November to talk about the main partners. And And if she finds any discrepancies or anything she wants to say, we should be differently and all that stuff. But it's been, it's a strange year that we're in and coming out of. And so I'm glad that I have the same lead auditor coming on site. They'll make things
Is there? It always makes things smoother when they Have an understanding of the business.
This is still the same company, right? They they just increased their Their fee by 25%? Is that what the
No, it wasn't, it wasn't
Is that somebody else?
I have no idea what they're going to do this year. It was 15, right around 15,000 two years ago. And then last year it was 16 and changed. It goes up every year. They had said 25%, so
Yeah, I remember that was kind of like a big deal.
We'll see. But everybody was because it was the change in accounting laws. ASPY or something like that.
Not sure if the new tax law is affecting nonprofits this year or not.
I don't know.
Yeah. Because there there are definite changes to the tax law. Okay.
And and Melody, oh, I'm sorry, do you want to like, just, I think some people who weren't here for the thing that the email that we got, do not reply.
That's been tinker.
It was taken care of. Okay, so I don't know if everybody was aware of that. Because everybody probably got the email.
I think we talked about it at the retreats. And I'll film, Natalie was the only one that didn't, that I didn't talk to personally. Okay, if that's it, thanks, everyone. This meeting is officially adjourned.